Sorry.
No, it's okay. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Miles?
Here.
Councilman Colicott?
Here.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Pitts?
Here.
Here. Today I will ask Councilman Colicott to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Please stand and face the greatest symbol of freedom that the world has ever known. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask all those in the audience to please silence your cellphones or turn them off if possible. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found at the entrance of the city council chambers. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Moving forward, I'd like to go ahead and invite the Orange County Sheriff's Department up for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Rosini, Mayor Protem Pitts, and council members. Sergeant Troy Feely from the Orange County Sheriff's Department. I'm here in replacement of Pat Rich for today. He happens to be on vacation. And I'm here to give the Villa Park stats for September of 2019. It was actually a very, very good month, I think, here in the city of Villa Park. We had one vehicle burglary on the 17,000 block of Athens Avenue. It was a window smash with the loss of US currency. We had one grand theft on the 18,000 block of Patricia Drive. Multiple items were removed from an unlocked vehicle, loss of luggage, some clothes, headsets, and toolkits. And one petty theft from the 17,000 block of Santiago Boulevard, which I can only assume, since it was groceries that were not paid for, was at the Ralph's. The total number of service calls for the month was 552. That actually breaks down to about 106 assigned calls for service and 446 that were observed or calls that were initiated by our deputies in the field. We had one traffic accident as well in the 18,000 block of Villa Park Road. It was a non-injury traffic accident. There were 50 traffic citations and six parking citations. In preparation for today's board meeting, or council meeting, I actually went and watched last month's meeting. And I saw that Mayor Rosini had actually made some acknowledgements towards the deputies and how they're being more active and more proactive. I think it was referenced some kind of speed bumps or something like that that we were gonna, that we're doing a study on or something like that. I took the liberty of going back just to see what the stats were over the past couple of years. It's just for the month of September, but I think it shows exactly what Mayor Rosini was trying to impart last month, which is in 2017, there were only about 283 calls for service. Split up between observed calls, which were 139, and regular assigned calls for service, which were 144. Then last year, it went up. There were 261 observed calls and 119 assigned calls for a total of 380. And like I said, this month, it's 552 for this year. So as you can see, and I think again, like Mayor Rosini was saying, with the, when Lieutenant Puckett came on and now with the continuation with Lieutenant Pat Rich, there is much more proactivity going on. And there's deputies out there, you know, enforcing some of these speed laws and things like that to make sure that the community is much safer. So I wanted to also remind everybody that tomorrow is the bike rodeo at Villa Park Elementary. It's from eight o'clock in the morning until 10:00 AM. About two hours where we have a couple of deputies coming out to teach bicycle safety. They'll be doing some obstacle courses for the kids and things like that. So, but pretty important, obviously, for kids to know a little bit about bicycle safety. So, and if anybody has any questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Orange County Fire Authority. Chief Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Phil Johnson, Division Four, from the Orange County Fire Authority. Over the last month's time, since the last council meeting, we have responded to 39 calls for service in the Villa Park area. And I'm proud to announce we have had no fires or major incidents among those 39 calls. As you've probably heard, at least through the National Weather Service, we do have a San Ana Wind Event rolling in here on Thursday. It is going to be deemed a moderate event, per the National Weather Service. It will start coming in Wednesday evening and be over by late Friday. Throughout the rest of the weekend, we will have dry conditions, but the winds will be gone and the temperatures will start to drop slightly. This wind event will be stronger than the one that was earlier this week and into the weekend. They are expecting to go to red flag warning at 05:00 or five o'clock in the morning on Thursday, and it will last through five o'clock on Friday evening. Temperatures will be in the 90s, will be down to single-digit relative humidity. The wind gusts in the wind-prone areas can be up to 65 miles an hour and 20 to 25 miles an hour sustained. The OCFA, in response to this, we will be upstaffing fire engines, personnel, helicopters, bulldozers, dispatchers, and hand crews as well as reserve firefighters. Additionally, they are expecting another possible event to come in October 29th and 30th, but it is too soon to know what the strength of that is. That will be determined by the National Weather Service. Any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Be safe. Before we move on to council member meeting attendance reports, I think it's important that we welcome a new member of the Villa Park staff, our finance director, Mr. Jim Gorza. Jim, do you, would you like to say a few words and give us a little bit of your background? Surprised, by the way.
Sure. They have 31 years of county experience with county auditor as well as various departments. My last assignment for the last 10 years is budget finance manager with Department of Child Support Services. Have a wide range of experience from purchasing through, you know, financial reporting.
Well, I think we're very, very blessed to have you. Steve has said many, many kind words about you, and we appreciate you coming on board and look forward to working with you. And hopefully I'll get those checks back to you as soon as possible.
Appreciate it.
Council meeting member attendance reports. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control.
That's a library.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Shawna, I apologize. No, I wasn't intending to slight you. I apologize.
My favorite report.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
You know, I look forward to these meetings. You always say the most.
Well, you always have such good news for us. You guys are really knocking them down and picking them up and doing a great job and really getting literacy out there, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
It's a great place to share the library with. Last month, we attended the Fall Family Night at Villa Park Elementary, and we spoke with families and students about the library. Our circulation of books and materials was up by about 20%, and our attendance was up by just over 20% for that time last year. Right now, we're in the middle of one of our most popular reading incentive programs. It's the In-N-Out Cover-to-Cover Reading Program, where children ages four to 12 read five books, and then we give them a certificate from In-N-Out for a hamburger or a cheeseburger. And right now, we already have 189 kids signed up, and the program goes until the 16th of November. So it's, it's one of our really popular programs. And next month, we have three special events in addition to our regular monthly programs. On November the 2nd, we have, this is a long title, we have a Jet Propulsion Laboratory Solar System Ambassador coming. And she is going to help the kids make a space colony and teach them about some of the obstacles explorers face when they're exploring space. Cody the Therapy Dog is coming back on November the 7th, and kids have already signed up for every minute that he's available, so we're happy to have him back. November the 16th, we're going to have a craft program for adults. They'll be making flowers out of paper. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Looks like no questions, just our thanks. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, skipping ahead, sorry about that. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control.
Thank you. There, there was no meeting for the month of October. However, there was a notice put out about some mosquitoes testing positive for the St. Louis Encephalitis, which is a viral disease that can be transmitted to humans through the bite of a mosquito. There have been no human cases, no confirmed actual human cases, but this is the first time that mosquitoes have tested positive for this in 30 years, I believe, is what the article said. Orange County Vector Control just still recommends taking precautions and making sure you're wearing repellent and long sleeves if you have to be out where there's mosquitoes, and make sure you dump all the water. Unfortunately, there's no vaccine. There's no treatments for St. Louis Encephalitis. Most people, if they are bitten and do contract the viral disease, would experience similar flu-like symptoms with headache malaise. But again, it's, it's, it's not lethal except for those that are extremely ill. And again, there are no confirmed human cases, but this is the first time that mosquitoes have tested positive. I think in the Garden Grove area?
Correct. Garden Grove and Anaheim.
And Anaheim. So, that's it.
And just to touch on that, thank you for the report. The particular demographic that it affects the most severely typically are older residents of Orange County, if it were to, but thankfully it hasn't. So it's really important, since the mosquito season, so to speak, has been extended out a few weeks, that we continue to wear repellents and make sure that we're very careful with our standing water. So please be careful. As much as the mosquito repellent may smell, it may, may really provide a significant benefit, so.
One point. Steve and I talked today about a potential situation over near my neighborhood where we've got standing water in a, in a curb that's not, it's an anomaly of the curb, and we need to take a look at that and see if we can prevent that, because there is standing water and there is mosquitoes.
Yeah, well, let's make sure that we get a note over to Vector Control and have them take a look at that. They'll should be able to at least remedy the acute issue, but the chronic issue obviously would be reworking of the curb area. Thank you. Next up, we have Orange County Fire Authority. That'll be my report. I beg your pardon, jumping ahead again. I just.
Most interesting.
I know. I'm so eager to get to the Fire Authority. Sorry.
Okay, that would be me. I'm the representative on the Orange County Sanitation District. I represented the city at the September 25th meeting of the Board of Directors, and as typical, much of the agenda addressed operation maintenance of the infrastructure of this critical operation. At the, during the board meeting, we also finalized the update of the Executive Management Compensation Benefits Package and basically kept it in line with the previously approved adjustments to the, to the staff salaries and benefits. We also finalized the update of the district strategic plan. The next meeting of the board will be tomorrow at six o'clock at the district offices in Fountain Valley. And they're open public meetings, so anybody's welcome to attend. On October 2nd, I chaired the meeting of the board's operations committee, and the key item was approval of the overalls of the central generation plant engines. This is not a small budget item. It's about $5 million to rebuild a couple of those engines. Anyway, the Orange County Sanitation District generates 60% of the power needed for the operation of the entire plants, using methane generated from the treatment operations. A couple of announcements. Friday at eight o'clock at Mile Square, this Friday at eight o'clock in the morning at the Mile Square Golf Course, there will be a state-of-the-district presentation, and all are invited, particularly elected representatives. So if you have your free Friday morning, you can learn a little bit more about what the district operations are and where the district is headed. And the next meeting of the, let's see, also on November 8th, Friday, November 8th at noon, there will be the groundbreaking ceremony for the groundwater recycling system final expansion. This is a world-renowned project, the Groundwater Recycling System. It's been in operation for a little over 10 years now. And this final expansion will result in reuse of all of the reusable wastewater that's received at the Orange County Sanitation District. So we receive about 185 million gallons per day of wastewater, and all but 15, about 15% of it will be able to reuse for replenishment of the groundwater basin and for seawater intrusion maintenance. So it's, again, this is Friday at November 8th at noon, and it'll be the groundbreaking ceremony for this final expansion. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Councilman, I believe you were supposed to go to Monterey to attend a meeting up there. Was there a trip report that you submitted that we can see?
I'll address that during the committee or the council member reports at the end of the agenda.
Cool.
Thank you. My turn. Just checking. Orange County Fire Authority. On September 26th, I attended the meeting of the Board of Directors for the Orange County Fire Authority and represented our city. And I'm just gonna go over the agenda briefly and talk about a couple of items and not get into great detail about over 100 pages of different documents, but just kind of gloss over some of the highlights. Chief, if you want to chime in at any time, let me know. Of particular note, I think it's important, our fire chief reported on September 11th memorial services and the dedication of a 9/11 artifact. It was amazing ceremony and a tremendous reminder of 9/11 and those that sacrificed so much for so many of us. There were a couple other items, but the last item, which was particularly special to me as a former dog owner, we had the administration of oath of office for the urban search and rescue canine, and they had a demonstration. And during this demonstration, three, correct me if I'm wrong, three canines, was it three or four? I think it was three, right, walked up ladders across a very, very thin board and then down the ladder. And you would swear they're gonna fall off any minute, but they were amazing. And they were incredibly obedient and diligent and did exactly what they were asked. And it really went to show how dedicated the canine handlers are and the kind of training that these animals do. They are extremely important to what the Fire Authority does, and we obviously hope to never use them, but the real truth of the matter is, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And to have an asset like that in our county that's used across our nation is truly amazing. And I'd like to say kudos to everybody there and the volunteers that stepped up to work for the Fire Authority. And it's a huge commitment, not only for the, for the firefighters, but as well as their, as their families, because they bring those animals home. They become another member of the family. So that was really a special ceremony and demonstration. A couple other items, approve the consent calendar and just general business. We had a quarterly status report on the Placentia Fire and Emergency Medical Services, the eventual handover. You want to talk on that a little bit, Chief, if you don't mind, kind of where we're at on that?
Presently, they're, we are both working together through achieving a transition, of course, by the turnover date of July 1st at midnight. Other than that, there is no further updates.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you very much. And lastly, we had a closed session, agendized item here, dealing with the Orange County Professional Firefighters Association Local 3631 and the Chief Officers Association. It's a contractual item, and we met with Labor Negotiator, and that's all I can talk about at this point in time. It's a pending item. That's all I have. Next up, we have Orange County Library Advisory Board.
The Orange County Library Advisory Board meets this week. That'll be our first meeting in a while, so have a report next month.
Okay, thank you. City Schools Advisory?
No meetings this month.
Community Development?
Let's see, no meeting. There was no meeting this month.
Friends of the Villa Park Library?
Friends of the Villa Park Library met on October 3rd. We discussed much of the information that Ms. Carlos just shared with us. And the other item of importance is the February 8th, 2020 fundraiser gala that the Friends of the Library are throwing. The author, they have a couple of authors that they've contacted and are looking to secure for that date, but it's going to be at the Phoenix Club, February 8th, 2020.
Thank you. Infrastructure Management Advisory?
There's, there was no meeting this month. However, our next meeting of the Infrastructure Management Advisory Committee will be tomorrow morning at 7:30 here at the City Hall. And those meetings are noticed and open to the public.
Investment Advisory?
Their meeting that was supposed to happen this month is pushed to November 13th.
Law Enforcement Advisory, no meeting this past month. It looks like the next meeting tentatively is November 4th, but that has not been publicly noticed at this point in time till we can confirm everyone's attendance. Next up, Villa Park Community Services Foundation.
There was a meeting on September the 25th. Most of the meeting content was planning for the Boat Parade that's upcoming, the Santa Tour, and also there were some questions and I think clarifications for the Winter Wonderland and some potential changes there. So most of it was around planning, planning exercises, and probably will continue in the meeting tomorrow night as well.
Thank you. Bridges at Kramer Place Advisory Committee?
So the Bridges Community Advisory Board met, and we got a lot of data. I'll just kind of hit some points. When you go into the shelters, they have a housing stability plan, and so they presented us with kind of what the plan was, and they also showed us some success stories, which is, it's good. It's refreshing to see and know that what they, what they do, get these people back up on their feet or get them in permanent housing. And they gave us some numbers. So for the fiscal year of July 1st, 2018 to July, June 30th, 2019, they served 811 individuals. Of those 811, 634 exited. The 634 are broken down into known exits and unknown. The known were 432, and those are known, for instance, they have either gone into permanent or temporary housing. They've either resolved on their own or they've been resolved with subsidy. And of the 634 exits, unknown, which is the name implies, 202. Of the 202, and this is what we have been talking about from the prior meeting, is how do we narrow down that 202 to know who's ending up back in the program? So we talked a little bit about that. So the unknown destinations, there were 68 individuals of the 811 that were served that did not come back into the system, and we don't know where they went. But 134 individuals that did exit and eventually did return back. So trying to work on why are they, why are they leaving without finishing the program and what can be done to get them to finish the program so that unknown number gets smaller and the known number gets bigger. That is it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. At this time, we will be having public comments. Members of the public may address the city council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Opportunities will be also provided for public comment on each agenda item. That's at a separate time. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. Do we have any speaker cards?
Thank you, Mayor. No, we do not have any cards submitted at this time.
Okay. At this time, I would like to just make one comment regarding the pink ribbon I'm wearing right here. October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I think it's very important that we have an open and public discussion about this. This is an epidemic, in my opinion, that will affect, that has been proven, will affect one in eight women born in the United States. One in eight. That's one in eight moms. It's one in eight sisters. That's one in eight daughters. It's one in eight grandmothers. This, this is a very, very serious thing, and I think it's important that we, as community leaders, remind our residents that it's important to try to get out in front of this through screening, through detection, and then through aggressive treatment, and continue to raise awareness about the plague that breast cancer is. And I just wanted to point that out, since October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you. Next, we'll have the first public hearing. Our first reading is the review to waive the reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
This is the monthly report that allows us to move forward in an expeditious manner in our council meetings, and we would recommend approval.
Okay. Unless there's any comments or questions from the council, which I doubt, and any from the public, I'd like to have a motion on this.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passed by a 5-0 vote.
Next public hearing, our next hearing is the review of the Code of Amendments to Section 23-6.7, property development standards for E4, single-family residential estates. I will now open the hearing. Steve, please give the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading of the ordinances that we first addressed, the council first addressed and approved at their last meeting in September. This is basically to address some, basically 11 properties where there are E4 properties that are basically smaller than normal-sized E4 residences. So this would bring them in line with the neighboring R1 properties that are close by and bring them to a more proportional fair equity situation. Again, we believe it affects approximately 11 Again, we believe it affects approximately 11 properties. Ray Pasqua can fill in a little bit of details here. Ray?
I'll be happy to answer, any questions you have?
Wake him up.
Actually, there were nine lots within this tract off of Murrow Circle that was between 7,700 square feet and 11,000 square feet. For whatever reason, it was zoned E4 when it should have been R1. So we made the adjustments accordingly to be able to apply development standards that would be more proportional and equitable for these properties.
Again, I would also add that this is the second and final reading of the ordinance. So should the council so approve this today, it would go into effect 30 days after approval. Should the council decide to make changes to it, we would have to come back for a subsequent second reading to it at that time. So the council has the freedom to do whatever they really want to on this agenda item tonight.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff?
We don't have any opposition from any residents or any comments on this?
Thank you, Councilman, I received a number of, several calls, about three, I want to say. All of those, there was some confusion about it affecting the front yard setbacks. And when I described actually what it was affecting and provided some clarity, they all sort of felt that that was fine and a reasonable solution. I don't want to speak for them. Some of them don't like the, you know, the much changes at all, but they understood what we're trying to do and felt that this was a one way to do it, and they were okay with it at that point.
Okay. Just to clarify, the response on what they're worried about was that we were gonna push the setbacks too close?
No, there was the erroneous assumption that the setback in the front yard would be reduced to six feet, which is not a correct assessment. So when explained to them, that sort of, that solved two of the problems, two of the callers right away.
Okay.
And then when explained to them that it only affected the smaller number of lots in the city, and also that it was not a universal reduction, if you will, to every residence in the city, that also solved the third person's concerns. So those were the issues that were primarily, that there was some confusion on what the setback reductions would actually be.
Excellent, thank you, that's what I wanted to.
Question? I assume we sent notices out to everyone around the area?
We've sent out public notices and noticed the ordinances in the paper as well.
Did we get any feedback from that at all?
Just the three phone calls.
Just the three phone calls?
Yes.
Because I did receive a few phone calls myself about this. And I'd say out of the three calls, two of them are opposition, one of them weren't. So I think more of clarification for most than others. But I just want to make sure that we noticed everybody appropriately.
Yes, sir.
And they had an opportunity to come last time or this time and speak up.
Yes, sir, that's why we have the two public hearings, and I think that's a good point.
Okay, thank you.
There's nothing further from the council? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this hearing on this item? Public comments on that? Council members, any discussion on this?
No.
Seeing none, hearing none, I will now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion on this matter?
I'll make the motion.
One second.
We have a motion and a second, please cash your votes.
Passed by a 5-0.
Next public hearing, item three. Our next hearing is regarding, I should say, is regarding the General Plan Use and Safety Element Amendments and Regional Housing Needs Assessment Update. I'll now open the hearing. Steve, please give the report.
This is, thank you, Mayor, this is the main event, if you will, this evening. It's the, we're required to do a general plan update. At the same time, we have, one of those elements is the housing needs assessment, which we talked about, that we have to, the housing element that's also due. So we have engaged our consultant from a number of years, who did our last general plan, I believe, in housing element, John Douglas, and he'll fill you in on the details. But this is, there's two elements to it. There's the general plan, which he'll explain, and then there's the housing element, which is a secondary issue, which is probably a bigger mountain and difficult, more difficult challenge that we'll have to address, so.
Yes, thank you. If I could, oh, there we go. I'm gonna ask the magic that controls the slides to advance to the next slide, please. Okay, as-
Alyssa.
As the city manager indicated, we're talking about the general plan tonight and two different parts to this item. The first item relates to the land use and the safety elements of the general plan. This is for action tonight. We're asking you to adopt a resolution to amend those two elements of the general plan. The second part of my presentation is going to be for information only. It's going to be talking about what's going to be coming up in the next couple of years with regard to the housing element and where that process is, what's evolved over the last year or so. Next slide, please. So beginning with the safety and the land use elements of the general plan, this is what we are recommending that a change be made to the text of those two elements. As you know, your general plan is a comprehensive, long-term statement of the goals for the physical development of the city, looking out 20-plus years into the future. The city's general plan is currently made up of seven different elements or chapters. State law refers to these different topics as elements of the general plan. And so the two items, the two elements that we're talking about tonight are the land use element and the safety element. I should mention that the current name for the safety element in the general plan is the seismic and safety element. And we're recommending with this action that that simply be abbreviated to the safety element to be consistent with how state law refers to this topic. Next slide, please. So the state legislature, for a long time, has mandated that the housing element be updated on a regular schedule. Recently, it's been every eight years. But a few years ago, they expanded that schedule requirement to include other elements of the general plan also, particularly the land use and the safety elements related to various topics of public safety that are addressed in the safety element and are somewhat correlated with the land use element of the general plan. So the three topics that we're recommending to amend in this safety element amendment relates to flood hazards and stormwater, wildland fire hazards, and climate change. Next slide, please. Now, state law also specifies a process that you have to go through whenever you amend your general plan. With regard to this amendment of the safety element, we're required to consult with the fire protection agencies that affect Villa Park. So that would be the Orange County Fire Authority and also CAL FIRE, the State Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, which also gets involved particularly in the unincorporated areas. But they also are involved with the review, in some cases, of local general plans. Specifically, the state law has been amended to require that cities submit their safety element to the State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection for review and consultation. So again, this is another expansion in the scope of state requirements in local general plans. For a long time, it's been limited to the housing element, but now we have the state mandating that cities also consult with the State Board of Forestry when they update their safety elements. Anytime a general plan is amended, there's also a requirement to reach out to Native American tribes that may have ancestral homelands within the territory of the city. And as part of this process, we consulted with the state, received a list of tribes that have homelands within the area of Villa Park. We didn't receive any requests from any of those tribes to consult on this topic. And then, of course, there's SEQA review, which is required. A general plan amendment is a project under SEQA, and so there's an addendum to the city's current general plan negative declaration that's part of your staff report package. Next slide, please.
Ask a question?
Yes, certainly.
How many tribes are either surrounding or that we know of in Villa Park?
If my memory serves, I think there were somewhere in the neighborhood of five or six tribal groups that claimed that they had some history with this area. The current safety element, seismic and safety element of the general plan addresses the topics that you see on the screen. Geologic issues, flooding, wildfires, hazardous materials, climate change, aircraft overflight from John Wayne Airport, and critical facilities. Next slide. And so what we are proposing to revise, based on the direction in state law, is with regard to including the latest information that we have on flood hazard zones from FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. There's terminology that's spelled out in the safety element. These terms, you know, typically you will hear terms like 100-year flood, 500-year flood, and those are statistical references. A 100-year flood is a flood that has a statistical chance of happening once every 100 years. But as we have seen, particularly in recent years, a 100-year flood does not mean that it only happens once every 100 years. I think some of the large storms that we had off of the Gulf of Mexico in recent years, in Texas and so forth, we may have even had two 500-year storms within a short succession. And so it is a statistical measure, but it doesn't mean that if you have one, you're not going to have one for another 100 or 500 years. So the change that we're recommending in the general plan is to simply incorporate the latest version of the map, the flood hazard map, that is available from FEMA. And FEMA updates these maps periodically. And so the idea is that whenever there is an update to the safety element, that it would, that that map would be revised to reflect the latest available version of the map. And then, of course, here in City Hall, there are more detailed, larger-scale versions of those maps for anybody who wants to come in and take a look at a more fine-grained analysis of where those lines fall. We've also added some discussion regarding safety hazards related to the two dams that affect Villa Park, the Villa Park Dam and the Santa Yoga Creek Dam. It's important to recognize that those dams are regulated by the state. The Division of Safety of Dams, they're inspected periodically. And so that helps to ensure the safety of those dams. Next slide. The next topic where changes are recommended has to do with wildland fire hazards. And you may hear the term WUI, which stands for Wildland Urban Interface, which we have a lot of here in Orange County. It's the edge between suburban development, urban development, and the natural wildland. And that is unfortunately a very dangerous area because as fires come through the wildlands, they reach the interface and can cause substantial problems. CAL FIRE publishes maps, fire hazard severity zone maps, for the entire state. And they divide these maps up into what's called local responsibility areas and state responsibility areas. There's a third category, federal responsibility, the national forests, the national parks, and so forth. But for Villa Park's concern, it would be primarily those two, local or state responsibility areas. So CAL FIRE publishes these maps. We've included the current version of the wildland fire hazard map in the element. And on page 6-10 of the safety element is the map, showing the wildland fire hazards for the city of Villa Park. And if you take a look at that map, you'll see that the very high, which is the highest risk area, is limited to a very small sliver of the city on the far northern edge adjacent to Anaheim Hills. We've also added a cross-reference from the safety element to the Orange County Fire Authority's policies and what's called their local hazard mitigation plan, which is a multi-topic plan that is typically updated every five years or so. And so we've incorporated by reference many of the, much of the information and statements from that local hazard mitigation plan. Next slide. The local hazard mitigation plan addresses the topic of climate change. And within that discussion, there are individual discussions about potential impacts to water supply and water demand that could change over time due to changing climate. Also changes in flood hazards, for example, more intense storms that could result in more intense flooding along stream channels. And also risk assessment. And there is one new policy statement that's recommended, and that has to do with coordination with the multiple other agencies that are involved with these different safety topics to review critical facilities and assess vulnerability to the effects of climate change. That term, critical facilities, refers to those facilities that are essential to serve the public in the event of an emergency, things like police and fire stations, hospitals, emergency operations centers, hazmat facilities, and so forth. So that's one new policy change that you would say is a substantive change to the element that's recommended. Most of these other changes are more or less clerical in the sense that they're incorporating by reference information from other sources. Next slide. Okay, I'm gonna shift gears now. So when we come back to turn this back to the council for decision and action, we're gonna be asking you to conduct a public hearing, and then the recommendation is to adopt the changes that are proposed to the safety element and to land use element that I've just summarized. Now I want to talk about the status of the housing element and recent actions by the state and by our regional government, which is the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG. Important to emphasize that this is information only, so we're not asking for any action or decision by the council tonight. This is just an update, if you will, a preview of things to come in the next couple of years. The housing element has this thing in it called the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or the RENA. This is perhaps the single most important component of the housing element of your general plan because the RENA is the process whereby each city is assigned a share of the state's housing need. And then, not only are you assigned a share, but then you have to demonstrate that you have the capacity, the realistic capacity, that the legislation calls it, the realistic capacity for development to occur that would house the amount of need that's been assigned to your city. So housing elements go in cycles. They cover a span of eight years. And so we are currently in the fifth housing element cycle that covers 2013 to 2021. And the city adopted the housing element for this planning period that we're in now, a couple of years ago. And it has been fully certified as compliant with state law by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So the next cycle, the sixth cycle, has to be prepared and adopted in 2021, and that will be another eight-year period looking out to 2029. So the city will be getting started very soon on that next update that will come back to you for review and decision in 2021. The way this RENA process works is it begins at the state level. The State Department of Finance, which is the demographic arm of the state government, Department of Finance, together with the Housing and Community Development Department, develop a forecast of population growth in the city, looking at, in the entire state, looking out eight years into the future. And then each region is assigned a portion of that statewide need. So here in Orange County, we're part of the SCAG region, Southern California Association of Governments. And so SCAG receives this allocation from the state, and then they in turn develop an analytical process by which a share of that total regional need is given to each city and county unincorporated area. As I mentioned a minute ago, what's significant about this is that in developing their housing elements, cities have to prepare an inventory of potential sites where housing can be built. And they have to compare that inventory to the RENA allocation that they've been given from SCAG. And if they are not able to show that there's realistic capacity there to accommodate that RENA, then cities are expected to do something about it. And that something is usually rezoning land. And so, as you might imagine, cities are extremely concerned about this process, and they tend to follow it very closely. Yes, council member?
What is realistic expectation currently defined as?
What is realistic expectation currently defined?
That is a really tough question. In a nutshell, you have state law, and then you have the State Department of Housing interpreting that law and passing judgment over cities' housing elements to assess whether they comply with the law. And a lot of it, I must say, is a gray area. There are some standards, but there's a lot of judgment involved. Without being too long-winded about it, let me, let me say that there are some objective standards, such as density. In state law, it specifies that for small cities in metropolitan areas such as Villa Park, if you have zoning that allows multifamily, which is apartments, at a density of 20 units per acre or more, then that is considered to be reasonable and suitable for low-income housing, just simply based on the density. So that's one objective standard. But then there are, there's other judgments that go into the process of reviewing the housing element, such as with accessory dwelling units. And what income level should accessory dwelling units be considered to satisfy? Have I answered your question at all?
Well, we adopted our housing element a couple of years ago, as you previously noted in your presentation. And that made certain assumptions.
Yes.
Would, and the state certified the, our housing element at that time?
Yes.
Would that still, based on your, based on your professional judgment, would that pass muster under the current interpretation of the laws by the state?
Yeah. Unfortunately, I cannot honestly stand here and say yes or no because there is a new law that has yet to be tested through the process. I am very concerned about it. And I'll tell you why. In our last housing element a couple of years ago, the parcel that we're sitting on right now, together with the office building next door, satisfied the city's obligations for zoning for lower-income housing because it allows housing development at the required density of 20 units per acre. The legislature amended housing element law about two years ago to tighten the rules for the review of potential sites for housing, in particular sites that are considered underutilized. They're not vacant, in other words. They're, they're non-vacant sites. The change that is of most concern is that the legislature added a requirement that said, unless the city has substantial evidence, and as your city attorney knows, substantial evidence is a legal term that is a fairly high bar, unless the city has substantial evidence that the existing use on that property is going to be discontinued within the next eight years, you cannot use that site to satisfy your requirement. So that's what the law says, but it has not gone through the review process. And there are no examples of other cities that have gone through this process yet under this new law. So I'm watching very closely to see how cities will be treated as they go through the process.
Okay.
John, I have a question on the safety side. When did CAL FIRE make that determination that those, let's call them two large parcels of land are deemed to be very high-fire hazard areas? Obviously, with housing stock, technological and engineering and redevelopment and remodeling changes over time make homes more hardened towards fire, boxed in eaves, you know, the replacement of shakespeare roofs with tile roofs, metal roofs, that kind of thing. When was that? Was that, is that a recent study? Can you talk about that?
You know, I'll first admit that perhaps the representative from the fire authority knows a whole lot more about this than I do. But my recollection is that the map that's in your packet tonight was prepared probably about 10 years ago. It's my understanding that CAL FIRE is in the process of updating those maps. I have not talked to anyone there recently to see what the schedule is. But on their website, they explain a methodology that's used for delineating those different fire hazards. And again, my recollection is that it has to do with weather patterns, topography, vegetation, access, can firefighters get in to fight a fire, things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
I can answer that a little bit, too. I actually happen to be looking at that on another issue that I'll talk about at the end. But those maps were done in 2011. They're looking at redoing them every 10 to 12 years. And then, and as he states correctly, they are not done based on what homes are there. They're done based on the environment itself, regardless of what homes are there.
Regardless of how many or the technology?
It's all based on the topography, the vegetation, as he states, the stuff that's separate from dwellings.
Okay. Thank you. Go on.
Okay.
I had a question. I'm extremely concerned about a bill that was just passed into law, AB 68.
Yes.
And if I read through that, that could potentially have significant impact on Villa Park.
Absolutely. And that's my next slide or two. I'll shift over and talk a little bit about the accessory dwelling unit laws. Okay, I think I've pretty much covered this slide. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, so what I've just been talking about is the generalities of the process by which these RENA numbers are assigned, how it happens, and who's responsible, and so forth. The status of this is that SCAG has been working on a methodology for the RENA for about a year now. A couple of months ago, the State Department of Housing issued their allocation of RENA numbers to the SCAG region. And that allocation was over 1.3 million housing units for the eight-year period for the six-county area that SCAG is responsible for. That compares to a little over 400,000 in the last cycle. So it's more than three times the last cycle. I think most of you have probably seen articles in the newspaper, statements from the legislature, from the governor, and so forth, that we're in a housing crisis. And so, personal opinion, as any good state administrative agency would do, they are reflecting the direction of the governor and the legislature in assigning that number of 1.3 million housing units to the SCAG region. It's no coincidence that a couple of years ago, the governor said that this state needs 3.5 million more housing units by 2025 in order to address the shortage that we have. And so I think there is a reasonable relationship here between the 1.3 million units that's been assigned to SCAG and the 3.5 million that the governor stated, has repeatedly stated over the last couple of years. So HCD sent a letter to SCAG saying, "Your share is 1.3 million." And so SCAG's committees reviewed that, deliberated that, heard presentations from their staff. They decided to file an objection, which the state law allows the regional councils of government to file an objection with SCAG, asking for revision to it. So SCAG's regional council, the executive board of SCAG, authorized that submittal. That was submitted just within the last week or so. HCD responded to that request by reducing the RENA allocation by about 3,000 units out of 1.3 million. That is final. The only opportunity for review is litigation. And so at the last meeting of SCAG's Community Economic and Human Development Committee, several of the members raised the question of SCAG looking into the possibility of legal action against state HCD. That'll be up to the regional council when they meet in early November. So what, what SCAG has right now is a final allocation of 1.34 million housing units that they have to distribute amongst the 190-some jurisdictions within the region. Next slide. So how does that affect Villa Park? As part of their methodology, SCAG has published an Excel spreadsheet that actually allows individual jurisdictions to go in and look at what, based on the draft numbers, what their RENA allocation is likely to be. And based on these new numbers and the methodology that SCAG has prepared, Villa Park's share would be 40 housing units compared to 14 housing units in the previous cycle. What is most concerning about these RENA numbers is the portion that's in the very low and the low-income category because those numbers are specifically tied to density and affordability. And so in the cycle that we're in right now, that our current housing element addresses and complies with, the city had five lower income, that's very low and low combined, five lower-income housing units. In the draft, as it stands today, it's 21 housing units. I can tell you from working with several other cities and looking at other cities, this is fairly modest, a fairly modest increase compared to what some cities have, have seen in their drafts. But it's, it's still a challenge. And so these are draft numbers. They will not be finalized until about a year from now. But much of next year is going to be involved in individual jurisdictions filing appeals to request a revision to their numbers. Next slide, please. So the, as I say, we're, this is a draft number at this point. Next month, SCAG will be submitting its methodology to SCAG for review. That methodology is basically the formulas that take that 1.3 million to calculate what each city's share is. HCD reviews that and then either requests SCAG to revise it, or they approve it. And then, based on whatever the outcome of that process is, then SCAG will publish formal draft allocations to all the jurisdictions around the region. And then next spring and summer, there's this appeals process that I referred to. The legislature has also revised the rules for these appeals. Now they've expanded the process to allow any jurisdiction to appeal another jurisdiction's allocation. And they also allow private parties or any organization to file an appeal against any jurisdiction's allocation that they don't care for. The legislation also allows HCD to refer questions like this to the state attorney general for potential litigation. And the, and the, the end of the process is when cities prepare their revised housing elements and submit those to state HCD for review. And state law says that in SCAG region, cities have to adopt those revised housing elements no later than October of 2021. So we're about two years away from the end of this process. Okay, so that's, that's all I have to say about the RENA, the status of the RENA. Let's go to the next slide, and we'll talk a little bit about accessory dwelling units. This has been a fast-moving train. And I admit that I spent a fair amount of this past weekend trying to digest the new laws that were just signed by the governor within the last couple of weeks. With regard to, and yeah, as, as I'm rambling on here, I, I pulled out an excerpt from one of the governor's statements as he was signing these. And some of the key phrases that jumped out at me is that the state is removing some key local barriers, local means cities and counties, local barriers to housing production, that the state is just getting started on solutions, and that the state needs to call local government out for not building enough housing. What's interesting about that is local government does not build housing. It's private developers, nonprofit developers, that actually build housing. What is fair to say, though, is that local governments, it's sometimes referred to as setting the table for development. So local governments are responsible for adopting plans and adopting zoning. And the zoning includes development standards and procedures and fees and all of those things that go into local regulations. But what I have seen over the last couple of years is that the state legislature and the governor are continuously beating local government over the head and sort of ignoring many other potential contributors to this housing crisis. And I'm not going to go into that tonight. When, when we come back with the housing element process over the next couple of years, we'll, we'll get into this in more detail. There were, at my count, I think there were five bills that were signed by the governor just within the last couple of weeks that addressed the topic of ADUs, accessory dwelling units. There was a lot of overlap. The, the total of all of those bills was well over 100 pages, and there was a lot of overlap and redundancy. And so, never having gone to law school, it was a challenge for me to try to make sense of the, these conflicting provisions of, of these five different bills. And I finally stumbled across an article that was written by an attorney. And that article explained how these conflicting provisions of bills get resolved. It has to do with the timing and the chaptering and so forth. So what I was able to glean from my review of the bills, and you know, I think this is still, the dust is still settling on this. So I believe these bullet points to be true. But I will not know for sure until January, when, when the Secretary of State publishes the new version of the California Government Code. So the things that I've seen, continuing to relax the development standards for ADUs, such as the size limits on ADUs, the lot size, there can be, lots cannot be excluded because of, because they don't meet a certain minimum lot size, setbacks, height, and so forth. One of the big changes is that cities must allow two ADUs now on a single-family parcel rather than one previously. And they, they define them, one being a regular ADU and the other being a junior or J-ADU. And there's separate definitions in the law about what's a regular ADU and what's a junior ADU, as the term implies, junior ADUs tend to be smaller than a standard ADU.
Must they both be, must the second be a junior ADU, or can they both be?
Yes. They can, they can have one of each.
One of each. One's a junior, one's a senior.
Yeah. So in other words, a total of three housing units, the primary housing unit, one ADU, plus one junior ADU.
But you couldn't have two, the primary and then two senior ADUs?
No.
I don't, I don't believe so. It's one of each of those three things.
I think one more thing to consider, too, is that front house can be turned into a multi-dwelling unit. So you could have a multi-dw, multi-family unit, dwelling unit on the front, taking from a single-family home to a multi-family. And then two ADUs in the back, one junior, and for lack of better terms, one senior, with four-foot setbacks around your yard. I mean, this is, this is ridiculous. This scares me.
That should scare everybody. And should scare everybody, candidly.
And, and most of what I read in AB 68 conflicts with just about every ordinance that we've got here.
So, so for point of clarification, I think Todd and I were just talking about this. The, the way the state law is written, it supersedes local jurisdictions. So our ordinances are superseded.
Right.
And it would no, they would no longer be in effect to the extent that these are now the rule of law in the land, if you will. So we're all sort of required, regardless of what's on the books for our ordinances, to comply with these standards.
Because I can see, you know, these real estate rental companies coming in here and buying our single-family homes and turning them into multi-family dwelling units. I mean, that's, that's a huge concern for me.
That's definitely one of the fears, and I'll just say, Mr. Douglas's point, all those are correct, that you have on there. That is how it all works together. It's, it is basically a... It's, it is basically a usurpation of local control by the state government over local zoning.
Yep.
For...
Do we have any recourse with this from a legal perspective?
No, as a general law city, we're governed by state law and this is not state law. The, the recourse, and I'm not the first one to say this, is really a state voter initiative. When the government pushes too hard, people have to push back. The state Supreme Court has been very protective of the, of the initiative power. So, I would say that is probably going to be the, the main recourse is going to be political.
Not to open up a huge can of worms, but I think you're touching on something political. And I think who we elect in our state legislature and our governor have huge bearing upon this issue. And frankly, have turned a, a problem into a political advantage and a mantra, in a sense. But you touched on general law. Now, if we were not necessarily arguing we should go to, but a charter city, would, how would that affect things?
The state, over the course of the past decade, has so hollowed out any powers that charter cities really have that, in my opinion, becoming a charter city would not protect us from any of these. And the state has specifically said that housing is a matter of statewide concern. And charter cities do not have control over matters of statewide concern. The only issue where a charter city has actually been helpful lately is Huntington Park, Huntington Beach got some play out of it in the immigration stuff, which was incorrect judicial ruling, but I don't think it would help us.
I think charter law also helps you in the appointment of vacancies to council members and the way the elections are conducted.
Yeah, it's procedural stuff of a local nature that...
It's typically not, like you said, statewide nature issues.
Is this law actually signed and in effect today?
These, these are all signed.
That's what I thought.
It's signed, it doesn't go into effect until January 1st.
There's some planning to do.
One other thing I would add is that some, my recollection is that some provisions of these laws, the legislature said that they only remain in effect until 2025 and then are repealed as of January 1st, 2025. My recollection is that one of those examples is the owner occupancy requirement. So, one of the things that goes into effect January 1st is that cities cannot require owner occupancy of any of the units, of the main unit or any of the accessory units. They can all be rented out. But again, as I say, my recollection is that that provision expires in 2025. So, those, they're, you know, these are multi-page bills and there's, there's more details than what I've condensed down to just a few bullet points here.
How does that work if we have a setback that expires or if there's, the, the laws are put into effect that grant people the right, grant people the right to build further than they are right now? And then, if they were repealed, are essentially those people grandfathered in or do we?
Yes.
Correct. We don't have any recourse, I guess, is my question to?
Retroactively correct?
Right.
No, sir.
Okay.
Next slide and see if this is, oh, okay. So, that concludes my remarks about the RENA process, housing elements, and accessory dwelling units. So, with regard to ADUs, as the city manager pointed out, come January 1st, any city's ordinance that does not comply with the new state law becomes null and void. And, and it would default to whatever the state rules are. So, I think a lot of cities will be considering updating their ADU regulations to create whatever latitude still remains for local discretion.
Well, this is beyond ADU, though. This has to do with lot sizes, it has to do with setbacks, it has to do with ADUs, junior and senior, has to do with your single-family homes, all that stuff. I mean, it seems to me we should be doing some kind of comparison of, huh?
It's the basic character of our city.
Well, yes, it has the potential to do that. But I'm saying, we need to understand the impact of that against our existing ordinances, I would think.
I think what the, I think, I appreciate that. I think what we need to understand is, is we need to understand it, but we also need to understand that we, we are enforced to live with it for the time being, I guess, as of January 1st. Unless there is some other...
But I, I understand that, but I think it's, it's incumbent upon us as a council to make sure that our city understands this. Every resident in this city understands the impact, potential impact, that these laws that, that they're trying to enact are going to potentially affect us. Your neighbors may change and the whole outlook of what that property looks like today i- is completely different, potentially.
And, and I will say, several of these laws were just signed as of Sunday, this last Sunday. So, we're still sifting through a lot of the dust and there's a lot. So, it is a voluminous effort to go through a lot of what they've thrown at us.
Todd.
I apologize.
No, no, no.
So, I mean, I have my people, my people, I don't really have people. My firm is putting together an outline, a legal synopsis of all this, which we'll be presenting to Steve, Mr. Douglas, all of you. So, so you have that, which it can be shared with you, just so you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I think one of the things, too, is it affects our planning approval process. It affects, it affects, I mean, just the whole what and how we do things. I mean, if you saw there, there was even removal of fees for a certain size.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, there's, there's, you know, there's a change in how we do business at the city level. Not just what the city looks like, but how we even do things in the city. And I think there's a huge sort of repercussions here that maybe they were anticipated in Sacramento or maybe they weren't, I don't know. I can't speak for them, but it does, it definitely has a massive impact on us.
So, I have a question, trying to wrap my head around this. Okay, so, my understanding is prior to this, the new cycle, we used to be able to designate this area and the neighboring area as could potentially be rezoned for low-income housing, correct?
It's already been rezoned.
Right, okay, it's already been, but now we have to, but now that's not going to work anymore because we know that we're not leaving in the next eight years. There's no substantial evidence we're leaving in the next eight years. Okay, so...
Just for the record, I would, I'm not willing to go that far that it won't work, but there are maybe more issues pertaining to that work.
Well, so what about, what about this as a, maybe might be really on thin ice? But, so now we have this thing with the RENA numbers and we have to come up with the ability to put 40 low-income housing, right? And now we have this thing with the accessory dwelling units. Why couldn't we say, well, since we have such large lot sizes that could accommodate the juniors and the seniors, therefore, we actually could satisfy this 40 number, magic number. So, therefore, proved we're done. Why can't we, doesn't it mean that we have them? But why can't we just say, since we're using their plan and they're going to force it on us, we could just say, well, all right, fine, our lots are 20,000, 23,000 square feet. There you go, we, we could fit it perfect.
There is a question of what the ADU qualifies as far as low income or whatever. So, there is a requirement or review that they'll take and the state housing will say, know the size ADUs that you're building or, or those types of homes and the affordability would not meet the low and very low moderate or moderate category. So, that's a question of whether or not the ADUs that might be permitted would in fact satisfy our requirements for what our RENA requirements are, if that makes sense.
Right.
Well, but we could just say the potential is there, that potentially we could qualify.
Well, we, we could say what we want. It's what the state says housing is, if they say it's acceptable. And that's unfortunately the, where the rubber meets the road and it's sort of a gray interpretive area. And that's the challenge we have.
So, HCD, directly to that point, 10, you know better than me, 15 years ago, would be more receptive, we used to call them back then granny flats, right, ADUs, to counting them to your numbers. In my experience, they have not been as receptive in more recent years to counting those types of...
It's counting and qualifying to be affordable.
Yeah, the lower, low income are very low, yes.
That's the issue, the affordability.
Yeah, the affordability becomes the issue, not just the construction of them, but the affordability. But no, but that is a good, that is a potential thing we would have to...
Well, it's a play on words. You just kind of say, well, we could build them. They are not there now, but we could, so we'll let you know if someone sells their house, which hopefully no one does. But, but I'm saying, you just kind of use it back on them and say, well, here you go. I mean, we're all built out and, but we do have the potential to do it. I don't know, that's my two cents.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and...
Could I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
For you. So, in terms of fighting against the state law, it seems like it's state law. There's not a lot we can do. Are, we have laws that contradict them, this new plan. If we tried to enforce our ordinances above the state ordinances, obviously, we wouldn't be in compliance with the state. We would then get into a situation where we were fighting against the state law. They would be sued. Sorry, are you?
Go ahead, I'm, I'm just, was talking to Todd.
Oh, okay. So, in terms of our city's ability to fight against that, do we have the capacity or the ability to try to enforce our current ordinances and then face litigation that might bring this to a head further down the road?
Well, one of the things that's been clear in the governor's message, and you'll recall in Huntington Beach, there was a case. The governor has authorized attorney general to pursue actions where cities are no longer compliant with state law. So, to the extent that we were to attempt to, and Todd can address how that goes, but we would be attempting to enact something that would be violation of state law. And the state attorney general has made it clear that they will be coming back and potentially initiating litigation and/or whatever that might entail against local jurisdictions. So, we might try to, try to enforce something, turn around and be subject to litigation, as is the case in, say, Huntington Beach where they're being sued by the state.
I'm not recommending we do that, but I do want to get a clearer idea of what that looks like, what the costs are, what that might give us the ability to gain other cities that were looking to do the same thing, if there's other litigation out there. If we wanted to fight against to keep our city the way it is, how would we, how might we go about doing that? What are the costs?
Right, well, the best approach probably would be a collective of a number of cities trying to fight on the same battlefield, on the same issues. The, the legal deck chairs, though, are stacked pretty heavily against cities in this regard. So, any litigation would have a certain Don Quixote type of quality to it, right? There are ramifications if we don't, so HCD gets to be the arbiter of itself in large regards. It's, I mean, it's sort of like that 1.3 million, you know, number of homes. Where did that come from? You know, it's just, okay, you know, we're the directorate, this is France, that's the number, go build it. It doesn't have any, anyway. What I'm trying to say is, though, HCD is going to say whether our housing element is certified. If it isn't certified, there are a whole number of ramifications that can result from that. They could take away theoretically, I think they did it to Mission Viejo in the past, the ability to take away your, your city's ability to issue building permits. So, somebody comes in and wants to remodel their kitchen and they can't because you don't have a certified housing element. So, could we fight? Absolutely, we could fight. Are the odds of potential victory high? Probably not.
So, if we can't issue building permits, doesn't that mean that people can't build out to the extent of what they're allowed to build under the new laws?
True, that's not, it's, it's directed to be punitive, though. And clearly, a judge who would order such a thing would make an allowance for any affordable housing type of units and exempt them out, right? So, you know, it's, it's the game.
Can I have a, can I spare me one? It might be a really dumb question, forgive me, because I'm not a lawyer, I'm a science geek, but that's probably questionable now, too. But, so, I understand that these laws are going to govern and control and override the local laws and ordinances that we have. What, what prevents the private homeowner from creating a contract when they sell their home? And in that contract, it says that you can't, part of the contract, I mean, it's stupid, but maybe part of the contract is they can't put accessory dwelling units on there. Is that, but the, I mean, the state can't control that, can they?
You know, that's an interesting, there are a number of, of limitations on what you can put in sale contracts. I mean, I would say the most egregious example was not being able to sell to people of certain races, blah, 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 50 years ago. This is not, of course, at that same level, but most likely a court, if it's, if it's violative of public policy, such provisions and contracts are unenforceable.
I, I think the other issue, too, and I think that Mayor Pro Tem Pitts suggested if a corporation would wanted to come in and buy, they could pay high dollar and somebody's going to say, well, look, I'm going to get more money out of the deal. Why do I sign and care? I'm leaving. I just made a killing. So, in practical terms, a homeowner could make a substantial gain on their initial investment and be bought out, if you will, by a corporation. So, you know, and the corporation over the long term has the plan to do exactly what the mayor Pro Tem suggested. So, there's that, sort of that reality is that there is that possibility, but there's the, the economic reality of what the incentive for the homeowner is, is like, hey, I get money here.
But why couldn't we just deny them a business license?
What?
Not quite that easy.
Deny?
Business, if they were coming to buy something.
Let's go ahead and suspend questions from the council. Let's, let's see if there's any, anybody from the audience that wants, and we can bring it back to the council for further discussion. Do you have anybody in the audience that wants to comment on this? All right, now, let's bring it back to us and have an open-ended discussion. If there's anything further.
Well, just on, on the premise of if, you know, a big corporation came in and bought it and started using it as rentals and whatnot, they would have to have a business license, right?
Theoretically.
So, why couldn't we just say, you know, once we get known as a city that doesn't allow or, you know, issue business licenses, then people wouldn't want to?
Same litigation issue.
I, I think there would be an, an exploration of every potential option the city had to safeguard its residents and its community.
I'm trying.
No, yeah, absolutely. You know, and to the point of businesses, and I don't remember if it was Joel, Susan...
We have time, between now and the first of the year, to sit down and assess after the laws, after we've reviewed the law, understand all the components of the law, do a plus delta with what our current ordinances are, and then figure out from there what our strategy is going forward, to me.
Assuredly, I mean, and we will definitely be doing that at council's direction, I would assume. And I will say, just because it was mentioned about the issue of corporations coming in and buying homes, there, I don't know if it was Joel's article or somebody else's, but there's an article in the register opinion section this past weekend, I know. If you guys want to get back on the register about how that is happening. And so, they would come in, buy a property, or they bought a foreclosed property during the last great recession or whatever people called it. And now, are going to put in ADUs on these homes and basically run them like hotels. Or rental units, more appropriately.
It's frightening. Unless there's anything further, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this matter.
Oh, for clarification, we are taking action on the land use and safety element revisions. We are not taking action on the housing and that is an item that we're following up on based on what, like, the mayor Pro Tem suggested and Councilwoman McMillan, all of you have suggested ideas and discussion points and investigative areas that we need to pursue. But so, to the, the action you, that we recommend would be just that resolution for the land use and safety element.
Do I have a motion on said matter?
I'll move the staff recommendation that the council adopt resolution number 2019-3467 approving the revised land use and safety elements.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Passes by a 5-0 vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Item four, our final hearing is the first reading of ordinance 29-617, the adoption of the 2019 building standard codes. I'll now open hearing. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the, you'll recall that basically in January of 2020, the new, new California Building Standards Code must be adopted by all cities. And that includes the California Building Code, the Residential Code, and the California Fire Code. And it also adopts remaining portions of the building standards codes. This is the first reading of the ordinance. The second reading would be in November. And should the council approve at that time, it would then go into effect and in time with state, to comply with state law. We do have the assistant, I'd say assistant fire marshal from OCFA here who can answer specific questions, should there be, because a large portion of their changes and whatnot are reflective of their efforts. If you want to go ahead and step to the podium, you can.
Council members, do you have any questions at this time? Any members of the public have any questions? Okay. Sir, do you have any comments on this that you'd want to share with us, anything in particular?
No, just in general, the, the adoption happens every three years. This particular code cycle, it doesn't have a lot of significant changes to it affecting the city. cycle, it doesn't have a lot of significant changes to it affecting the city. Wildland sections are still, per Title 14 of the State of California, we expect the state, as we said, to update their maps. Everybody's waiting for the new maps to be adopted and come in, and so, as you referred to, council member, that in 2011, the state had its last mapping. And so, after the last couple of fire seasons up north, we're waiting to see what those maps look like. Other than that, there's, the changes to the code sections are fairly insignificant at this point, mostly just verbiage and cleanup and things like that.
Thank you. Any further discussion with council members? Fine, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. Do I have a motion on this matter?
Move that we approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Please cast your votes.
That passes by a five zero vote.
Thank you. Next up is the consent calendar. Now, we will consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the county, of the city council, the staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items from four through seven you would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Number six.
Number six. Any members of the public want to remove anything? Any members of staff? All right. All right, I have six noted as being polled. Do I have a motion to entertain passage of the remainder?
Move that we pass the rest.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes for four, five, and seven.
Seven, eight, and nine as well, I think is-
Oh, I beg your pardon. I don't have that on my notes here.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm not a committee general, just got the notes here. So, thank you.
I'm excited about number eight. It's cool.
Let's go ahead and, so, just for the record, clarifying that, five, seven, eight, nine-
Yes, yes, sir.
-are all passed. Okay. Now, bringing it back to item six. You want to go ahead and-
Yeah, I just had a question. I think I asked you earlier. Could you, could you do some research for me and tell me what, you know, what's going on with the interest?
Yeah, the mayor pro tem picked up an item. There's a year-over-year difference. I believe I have the answer, but I have a different finance director. I want to make sure that I don't misspeak for the new finance director. So, I will, it was kind of a combination. So, I don't want to answer that, but, right, tonight, but I will get back to you very quickly once I confirm.
It's a $65,000 delta year-over-year in interest.
Right.
I just saw that.
Sure.
You know, and it's 26, it leaves us $26,000 variance from last year overall as a result of that major amount, so.
I would, it is a, it is a receive and not file item, so I do recommend that you go ahead and just receive it, but with the answer, with the direction that staff report back to you on the variance.
Okay.
If that's acceptable.
So, then, no motion needed.
Well, there would be a vote. You'd have to, because you pulled it from the consent, so you'd have to receive and file with the direction. The staff have to come back with an explanation.
So, moved.
So, moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote on item six. New business, item 10. Our new business item is the approval of the proposed engineering contract augmentation, in quotes, and to authorize the second amendment to be signed. Steve?
Yes, this is a, an item we, as you're aware, we currently contract with NV5. It used to be Civil Source. Now, they've transferred out to NV5 civil slash Civil Source. They basically provide our engineering services. Our engineer is here on Monday, Wednesdays, from approximately nine o'clock till four each day. We have a number of items and projects going. We attempted some time ago to have an engineering tech on a Friday. It just, it isn't the kind of level of work that we were needed to get done. So, in an effort to help moving our projects forward first, and secondarily, to allow us some succession planning, because NV5 has a candidate that would work in this lot, who is, would allow us to, when the current engineer leaves, would allow us to transition this person. So, our goal is to have the person work every other Friday, come into the office and work on engineering projects, get sort of ingrained into the, not only the projects, but the culture of Villa Park over the next year or two, and allows us to get, move the projects forward that we're trying to, at the same time, have a succession plan in place, if you will. So, my recommendation is we sign this amendment, and it would be, again, contracting out, but we have a very experienced, I believe, person that has been candidate for this lot, and you've all met her. She's a very talented individual. I think you've all met her. If you haven't, I'll be happy to introduce you.
She's not here tonight, right?
No, no ma'am.
Okay.
She's not getting paid, so I don't, until you approve the contract.
Council members, do you have any questions?
No.
Does anyone from the public have any questions about this item? Any discussion on this item, council members?
Only question is, this doesn't impact the budget?
No, we had actually budgeted for an engineering tech, so there's a slight variance, and, because we haven't had anything for the last several months.
Okay.
So, here we are in October with no expense in that regard. So, this would allow us to, basically, deal with it within the budget.
Okay.
So, yeah, can I add on that? So, that's the not to exceed 25,000, right?
Yes, that's why I limited it to 25,000, because that's essentially how much we had.
Do I have a motion on this?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please record your votes. Next up is item 11, the city manager report. Steve?
Okay, again, that, just that passes with a four to one vote with an abstention from Councilman Colacott. Okay, the information number 11 is the monthly report. The mayor took my thunder away when I was gonna announce Jim Gorza. Again, that was the highlight of my report, so it's all gonna go downhill from there. Basically, we're very fortunate, Jim Gorza is a very experienced individual. I believe we're gonna have our hands very, our finances in very capable hands. We are continuing to move through a projects. We have a number of things to do. We have some very big challenges ahead of us, as you've seen with housing. Those things sort of tend to take some, they take precedence. So, the housing element and certain things will preempt a lot of some of the other things we're doing over the next several months. But, anyway, I am available to answer any questions.
No questions.
There's no action required in that.
Okay. Item 12, mayor and council member matters. Now, it's time to hear from individual council member information items. Councilmember Colacott, would you like to go first?
Okay. This, my first couple of items relate back to our discussion of the housing element. On September 25th, I attended the ACCOC Housing Committee, and then on October 11th, I attended the Orange County League of Cities meeting over in Garden Grove. And the key items that were discussed at both these meetings were the housing, or the recent state legislation signed by the governor regarding housing and ADU, you know, ADUs. All the other cities that were in attendance expressed the same frustrations and concerns that we're expressing here tonight. Going forward, and in September 25th and October 11th, it was, you know, the dust was still in the air, things were still happening. But I think going forward, that I'd like to encourage all of our council members to get involved with both ACCOC and League of Cities. I think this is, these are two avenues that we could use to work towards a referendum or, you know, initiative to try to modify some of the state legislation. I think it's gonna impact, well, it definitely will impact all of our communities in Orange County, actually statewide. And we can, as a single city, particularly a single small city as Villa Park, we're not gonna have a very large voice individually, but by banding together with others and providing some leadership, I think we can make a significant difference statewide to get some of this stuff corrected. So.
SCAG, too.
Pardon?
SCAG, too.
Yeah, it's, the, more locally, we've got the League of Cities and the ACCOC, at least the League of Cities, Orange County chapter, and that's, you know, maybe where we can start and then move it on up.
Well, we have representation in SCAG. I attended SCAG this year. I had some, I had some thoughts about, you know, things that we could do there, but I think if we're more involved in all three or all of those agencies-
Absolutely.
-would help.
Yeah, this has been a trend coming down the tracks for as long as I've been on council. We first had to deal with the housing element that we adopted a couple of years ago, and that was, that was a booger. But even then, we knew that more was coming, and we've seen some ugly stuff that was not adopted in the last legislative session, and some of it was more onerous than was adopted and signed by the governor this time. For example, allowing lots to be combined if you're within a half, there was one piece of legislation that allowed lots to be combined, and if you're within a half a mile of public transit, which means a bus stop, you could have multi-level, like, four-story buildings constructed and no local, no local oversight over that. So, there were uglier things that have been in the works that fortunately have not been passed, but I think we've got a lot that, as we discussed tonight, that is pretty onerous for our community, particularly if we want to maintain the character of what we want Villa Park to continue to be. So, let's, let's all work together on, you know, working with SCAG and League of Cities and ACCOC and whatever other venues we can come through to make a difference. Okay. Also, on October 7th and 9th, I attended the California Stormwater Quality Association Annual Conference in Monterey, and there were 1,200 attendees at this conference, and the, this organization is called CASQA, that's the acronym. It's an association of cities, counties, special districts, regulators, industry, and environmental professionals, professionals to facilitate compliance with the requirements of the Federal Clean Water Act. And this is the most significant environmental regulatory program affecting Villa Park. We're covered under the stormwater permit that's issued by the San Antonio Regional, or issued by the San Antonio Regional Water Quality Control Board, coordinated by the County of Orange, but we have significant compliance requirements. Requires us to do certain things as a city. It requires us to oversee commercial activities and inspect commercial activities, and requires us to oversee construction activities, and the fines for noncompliance are significant. Anyway, just as a side note, I'm proud to note that I founded CASQA 30 years ago, specifically to help provide a forum for cities and counties and special districts and so forth, try to work together to make this program somewhat workable. It was, it's not a very workable set of regulations to try to regulate everything under the clouds, but that's part of our challenge. I attended a number of sessions at the workshop, or at the conference, including one on funding finance of capital projects to remove pollutants from municipal runoff, post-fire response, including soil stabilization, revegetation, reduce potential property damage. And we have a high fire hazard area, and that area burns, that's, that's gonna be bad enough, but if it does burn, from my prior professional experience, we face potential for flooding, flood flows, debris flows, mud flows, and something we need to be prepared to jump on if a fire occurs up in that area. Discuss the status of unfunded state mandate claims made under municipal stormwater permits, the development of requirements to monitor and address biodiversity in waters receiving municipal runoff. That means that the regulators are looking to cities to fund assessment of biodiversity in even flood control channels and other receiving waters that receive runoff from our cities, and otherwise responding to Clean Water Act citizen suits. So, anyway, I've not had an opportunity to prepare my trip report. I'll be preparing that, and that'll be submitted as part of the next agenda package.
Thank you. Council members of our man?
Thank you. So, I have a few things for October. On October 11th, I got to attend the Villa Park Elementary Movie Night, which was also, had a trunk or treat there. It was super fun. The PAC 850 Cub Scouts, as well as Troop 850 Boy Scouts, also attended, as did our library, to provide some treats for kids, and then just to make sure we had a presence at the elementary school. So, that was super fun. On October 13th, I attended the Villa Park High School Campus Care Day. This involved doing various projects around the high school campus to enhance the safety and beautification. So, I got a couple of really good pictures. We added a couple of crosswalks across the roads that were reworked, right in the front entrance there, worked with a fantastic, great group of kids that did all of the work themselves. I was there just to supervise, as it were, and only at the behest of Mark Kuli and some of the volunteers who were there that organized the whole, Mark in particular, organized the whole thing and made sure all the supplies were there, and I just got to kind of make sure everything ran smoothly. It was great to see all the kids go out and do their part to help with their own campus, to keep it looking pretty, and to be really responsible about making things better. So, that was fantastic. October 15th, our Boy Scout, Troop 850, had their open house, and if anybody has kids or grandkids that are interested that are ages 11 to 13, or really up until 15 or 16, and are interested in scouts, they should check out Villa Park's Troop 850. Then, on October 16th and 18th, the League of Cities had their annual conference. I was the alternate, so the delegate, to vote for Villa Park. They had two items to vote on. The first one was the one I was much more interested in, but it got delayed. They're gonna do some more research. I'll talk about that in a second. The second one had to do with Mexico clean water usage and some discrepancies about how we were using water coming from the Colorado and then the Tijuana River. It was complicated, and there was some stuff that I don't think I understood entirely, but it was just a referendum that we're trying to do the best we can with those resources. The first one was actually, and I'm, I'll try to follow this and provide follow-up reports on it, but the City of Rancho Palos Verdes proposed this idea that we have funds that, from the state, or from, sorry, from electrical utilities to underground poles, that each city gets an allocation, and then they get saved up over time. The City of Rancho Palos Verdes was looking to expand the usage of those and to get more funds, particularly in areas that are high-risk fire zones, and that in those zones, that not only would the use of those funds benefit beautification, which is generally what the fund is used for, but would actually be a safety concern. And that you might get more funds there, you might have greater access to them, we might be able to do some of that undergrounding quicker. So, those two areas that you saw that, you're like, why are these high-risk? Oh, cool, they're high-risk. We could, might get to underground them there, so it might be actually beneficial. So, we'll see. We'll follow this, see if, how the League of Cities Act is able to move forward on that and how it might impact us.
Thank you.
Thank you for going, too.
Council members.
Kind of a slow month for me, council-wise, but just wanna, I know, I know you'll probably touch on this, but I'm really looking forward to this Saturday and the Halloween Fest put on by the foundation. It's a great event. Have a couple of really strong chair members on that that I know are working really hard. So, I'm super excited to see all the kids dressed up and the vendors, and that'll be fun. Want to remind everyone about the flu clinic. That is Wednesday, November 6th, right here, from 3:30 until 7:00, or until we're out of the shots. There'll be 200 flu shots free.
I'm sorry, you said November 6th?
Yes, Wednesday, November 6th, starting at 3:30. Again, limited supply, so when they're gone, they're gone. So, suggests that you get here, but it's really important that you get your flu vaccine. Also, really excited, you know, December, we got a lot of fun stuff coming up. I'm super excited to see the Santa tour and boat parade, and then this year, for those residents who might happen to miss Santa during the Santa tour because of sports and activities or whatnot, you'll have another opportunity at the Winter Wonderland on December 7th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. here at the Villa Park Center. So, that's moving along superbly, and I can't wait for some ice skating and some snow. And please, everyone, make sure you're, you're, you're safe when you're out trick-or-treating. It's dark here, and make sure you carry your light stick or your flashlight, but, and if anyone has any questions, concerns, always love to hear from residents. If I don't answer the phone, leave a message. I'll call you back. And definitely think that we need to brainstorm and work on this whole housing thing, and maybe some residents have ideas, too, but- But I know as a community, I think we'll, we'll, we'll persevere, and we'll come up with something, hopefully. That's it.
Mayor Pro Tem?
A little light month for me as well. I did know what she said about the Halloween event that's coming up, but I have to say, I have to shout out to Shemee and her entire team that, that they put their heart and soul into this event, and, and there's so much energy and it's, and excitement around it. It's going to be a lot of fun, but she and her whole team, including her husband, just, they, they throw everything they have at it, and it's, it's a wonderful event, and I think everybody will enjoy it. Well, on October the 19th, I attended with my wife the Villa Park Women's League Dinner this past Saturday night. And I had dinner with, with 15, no, 10, 10 people. And I have to say that the main topic of conversation at that dinner was one of our city employees. And the admiration that everyone sitting around that table even toasted to that individual, and it's Mike Knowles. And I, I just, I was really taken back by how much they care for him, how much they, you know, just appreciate the amount of work that he does for us and the city. His, his knowledge of the city and what he does for us, and I just can't, I can't tell you how much I appreciate him as well. But that was, that was heartwarming to hear. I mean, I didn't even bring it up. It was just a topic that came up over dinner, and it manipulated the conversation for probably close to an hour about how wonderful Mike is. So I hope you will pass that.
You're here. We could toast him.
That, that information on to him, because he is, he is a blessing for all of us, and we really appreciate everything he does. On December the 6th, the Villa Park Women's League is having their holiday party at the Assistance League over here in, in Orange. It's a wonderful event. We attend every year, and I encourage all of you to attend and come and enjoy and have a good time. We, we thoroughly enjoy it every year, so. And then last but not least, Councilman Colacott, I had a question for you. You abstained from a vote on the engineer, and I believe that's in our, in our rules, that's a yes, but can you kind of help us understand why you?
Yeah, I'm working, I work part-time for a, a small environmental firm.
Okay.
And it's in the process of being acquired by NV5, so. Actually, I would have recused myself, but it occurred to me too late in the, in the process, so I just figured I'd abstain and stay out of it. And I, you recall, I didn't participate in any discussion about that.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments, and I'd like to echo the sentiments towards our city volunteers, our residents, our city staff. I too am looking forward to the event this weekend, and obviously our events in, in December, certainly I think my kids are too, so.
Dressing up Saturday?
Uh, no. But my kids will, that's for sure. No, that's, I won't do that, but I'm really looking forward to seeing the kids. That's really a highlight. Yeah, what time does it start, Crystal?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock. Thank you. I did get my flu shot, so I would encourage everybody to do that. Most grocery stores are really, really helpful and have programs that are low cost or no cost. If you're unable to get to our clinic, please do that. Who knows what this year's flu is going to be like? Couple things. I had the opportunity to meet with fellow mayor of Orange, Mark Murphy. We shared some concerns about legislation coming down from Sacramento that was touched on this evening, and are very frustrated, and wondering how we're going to deal with some of these issues. I, I look forward to our future discussions about how in particular Villa Park is going to deal with this. But that meeting focused on traffic concerns in and around our, our city, and his role as a representative on the OCTA, and just getting up to speed on projects that potentially may affect North Orange County as a whole. He also sits on a committee that deals with the toll roads, and he's a very knowledgeable individual, and I appreciate the time that he cut out for, for me. Also had the opportunity to attend, as I mentioned previously, the Fire Authority. And I, I want to go on record, and I think it's extremely important that all of us really think about every time you smell smoke, every time you see smoke, every time you turn on the news and you see one of these brush fires kick up. Orange County Fire Authority more than likely has at least one, if not numerous, engines at these fires. These brave men and women risk everything so that if not our home, somebody else's home, somebody else's life is, is saved, is protected. And they, we can all argue pros and cons about pension benefits and salaries and this and that, but the reality is, when you see them, say thank you, wave to them. And let's not forget that back on September 11th, 2001, there were approximately 343 firefighters and about 412 emergency services, including firefighters and police, that gave up their lives and that saved approximately between 20 and 30,000 people out of the towers. It's very, very important that we never, ever forget that. I wish you all well. I look forward to seeing you at events in the upcoming months. And I, like my fellow council members, have an open door policy. If you have any questions, please call. If you have any concerns, please email me. Even if we don't have an answer immediately, we'll try and do some research for you. If we disagree, we disagree. But the bottom line is, I will get back to you, and as will all of us. So thank you for tuning in, and thank you for being here. God bless. Be safe. I think we're adjourned.